Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Town of Osceus Committee of the Whole Meeting, September the 10th, 2024, at 9:00 a.m. in council chambers. So first off, we need to approve the agenda. And are there any late items? Thank you. Could we have a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you, Councillor King, Councillor Bennett, all in favor. Thank you. And the adoption of some minutes, Committee of the Whole minutes of August the 13th. Could we have a motion for that, please? Councillor Paterica, Councillor Chong, all in favor. Thank you. And we now will move on to petitions and delegations. And first off, we have a presentation from Mary Joy Harris. Could you like to come up to the microphone, Mrs. Harris, please? And you have to turn on the button, the bottom button, to make the red light go on? There you go. Thank you.
Does it need to turn green? Oh, no.
Yep, that's good. Yes, and you do know the delegations have a five-minute window, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Good, go ahead.
Yes. So, good morning and thanks for the time to do this. The event that I'm going to talk about quickly is something that I hope that you've seen the correspondence for in the past year and two months ago. It was July of 2023 that this happened to us. And I wanted to make sure that I understand that you have all seen the correspondence, because it began the day that the bushwhacking of our property happened. And my folks are Joy and Alberta Seavy. They've deceased. I have been here every summer and more for 55 years. The property has been in the family Seavy for 55 years. I'm not a newcomer to Osceus. I went to junior high and high school here. And my parents loved Osceus, and they contributed greatly to Osceus until they died. Now, what happened here is the last seven years, we have been specifically caring for not only my mother, who did end-of-life at home, but we also have cared for this acre. The acre is in three pieces. One is Oleander Drive. I hope if you have a chance, or if in the past you've seen the property over the fifty years, you'd know how beautiful and park-like it has been. La Marada moved in, and I want to tell you a little bit of the history. We were left with having loaned the top third of the property to La Marada for free for the duration of the building, equipment, and supplies. They left the property as with clay and the top soils and trees removed and irrigation removed while they used it for almost three years. And that was fine. They were going to put in the joint easement. The joint easement is now there. It's all blacktop and paved. So we were left with that. We were coming in and out of town. My parents couldn't deal with the hurt and the disappointment of how the property was left. Further to this, we took over and Gregory and I retired from Calgary, Alberta, where we raised our six children. And everybody kept coming, and we have been good neighbors. We have been sharing neighbors. We have been respectful neighbors. We have been compliant to the Town of Osceus. We got a notice from the town on a couple of occasions. When Gregory and I came to live all spring, summer, and fall, we began to realize, hey, it's time for us to reclaim the soil. The soil was now clay. The top soil was under four feet. The trees had been removed. So what Gregory did, he started a very, very victorious soil reclamation program. And he threw his heart and soul in it, and he began exploring habitats and plants. And we started doing planting. And what came about was we recognized garlic brew there beautifully. Then he added squash, seven different types of squash. And we distributed squash all the way up to Oliver Eats and either gave it away or sold it. Now, what happened next was we got, and we had had a warning from the town, and we responded by mowing the property and et cetera about four years ago. Well, that year, we were surprised, because now we'd done four years of growth. I don't know if you've ever seen the property, but the top end is a meadow. The middle end is, the middle of the property is a giant, 100-and-something-year-old pruned and controlled elm tree. And parking. And it is a place that we share with La Marada often, whether it's trespassing or not. It's a parking area for our little home, which is a very, very old cottage. And it was a self-sustaining cottage on an acre. We love it. It's been a haven for us, but it's been a lot of work for us. And we have paid taxes for 55 years. Now, what happened is on July 27th, after a note that surprised us from the town, a bylaw officer reported that a neighbor had complained and that we were, it was a good neighbor, a bylaw.
Excuse me, that's five minutes old. Can you quickly wrap it up?
Yes, I will. So you see, what happened that day was the bushwhackers, two people came on the property, and our property was now being, was now being gardened by, by four community gardeners, because my husband was diagnosed with a grave illness. And so we figured that out. And they were there when two people from the Town of Osceus came, and they brought in a mower and a bushwhacker. And they, unannounced to us, took everything down in the meadow. They also disturbed the irrigation, which took me 10 days to figure out why it was flooding and broken pipes on the first irrigation place. And furthermore, they gut punched us to the point where the next morning, I hadn't been told it happened. My husband and one of the gentlemen here was on the property when it happened. They asked them to please leave. They called in bylaw officers, and four people were now on the property. No one would leave our private property. And what happened after that was now. You see the correspondence? We went immediately and reported it. Nobody in maintenance could do anything. We came to the town. I all, I immediately ran to the RCMP and reported it. And then here we are now, talking to you about the correspondence. When it came time to taxes, we were, had been levied a fine of 800, about $760, something like that. And that sat there. So we paid it, because we also had discussions, and we realized compliance is the way to go. But I'm here to ask you to reimburse us for not only the out-of-pocket damage to our irrigation, but I'm asking for that fine to be reimbursed to us.
Thank you very much for coming and presenting to us, Mrs. Harris. We do have, I have all of the correspondence that was provided to you and to the town. So we do understand the situation, and thank you for presenting. I will just check and see if any of council have any questions.
May I have permission to finish this comment? Because my husband is here, and it's important that we have a chance to talk to you about his part of it.
You know, I'm sorry, that wasn't part of the agenda package that...
So you're going to hold us to five minutes?
So, well, you've had 10. So can I just ask if anybody from council has any questions about this? But we do appreciate you coming. We appreciate having all of the information, copies of letters. So we have that. Okay. Could I just check and see if anybody from council has any questions about this?
In other words, I would like to just say that our methodology, you're the decision-making party.
Question? Yes.
Yes. So, and in conclusion, the, we, we believe that governments were instituted by God, and they were such that the laws and the, and the, they're framed and held so that each of us have individual free exercise of our conscience and the right and control of property and the protection of life and our, and our homes. And we also believe that all men are bound to sustain and uphold the respect of governments in which they reside, while protected in their inherent and inalienable rights by the laws of such governments. And we were also taught that we believe that the government can exist in peace and accept such laws are framed and held. We will not be able to control our own decision-making, and the possibilities that were crushed that day by people were immense.
Thank you. Thank you very much for presenting to us, and we certainly have the information. So, thank you. All right, we have another presentation, and that would be Doug Fawson. Doug, would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
Good morning. I just wanted to make you aware of an incident that happened to us this spring. I live up in Rock Creek. We have a cattle ranch up there, and we use aircraft for looking for cows. And then we also have one for, now my girls have moved farther away, so we like to go visit them in northern Alberta. So I had a plane, I was parking it down here at the Osceus Airport, which has been muchly approved with nice tie-downs and a paved runway. And the plane that we have there is, it really likes pavement, so that's why we park it there. So on, between May 5th and May 12th, somebody vandalized the plane. We, I, my best guess is it was at the same time that the Osceus Home Hardware, somebody drove a Ford Explorer through the front door, smashed in, and stole a bunch of tools. And then I think they were maybe shopping for fuel in my airplane. They probably heard that there was fuel in wings, and they went along the wing and poked a bunch of five holes in the wing. When I contacted the RCMP, the first response was, well, you should park it somewhere else. And I do have an airstrip at home, so I can't say that I can't, but it's a dirt strip, and I have cows and mud and everything else in the spring, and I really do like this airstrip in Osceus. The, the damage done to the plane, the repair is somewhere around $40,000. My deductible is $5,000. It's a fairly big deal. And this airplane, I only paid $59,000 for it. Its value is about $100 right now. So it was very close to writing the plane off. And in airplanes, if you get damage on a wing service, you can't just buy a new wing, because it's a 1960 airplane. What I'm asking for is the town to look at, because you have such a beautiful fenced area already, the money was spent on that, that possibly two locks be put on those gates with a coded entry. Most airports in, whether it's Oliver or Penticton, they have a, just a lock with, it says the airport frequency or the emergency frequency, which is 1215. And most pilots can figure out what, what that is and use the lock, so just a coded lock. And the other suggestion is possibly looking at a, some sort of camera that would be pointing towards home hardware and the parking area on one of those light, one of your street lamps that are right there. The Drag Racing Society was good to work with. They actually pointed out some of our damage. They had good security. I really feel that the airport is very important. It's important to keep everybody using it, because that's how you keep eyes on things. We, sorry, got lost there for a second. So when you leave the airport, at the south end of the town, there's a very old sign that says, "No trespassing. Trespassers will be prosecuted." This was a former way of thinking. Now, the town's new sign at the center, like right where you park at the airport is, "Park at your own risk. The town takes no responsibility." And I think even just strongly worded signs helps. Like, there is no reason for people to be out messing around on our airports. And I know there was talk of putting fuel in at the airport, and I think it's just something we have to look at improving. A few days ago, there was two helicopters that landed, and people were like tying them down and staying. And the one was worth 1.5 million, and the other plane was worth $7 million. Last year, since I had been parking my plane there with the new tie-downs, there was consistently five airplanes parked at the airport, and now you'll notice there's none. And that is because they've all heard that my plane was damaged, and they're not willing to park here. We have a beautiful town that's within walking distance of the airport, and if adding some cameras and, and some cheap locks is a way to up security, we'd really, really appreciate it. So that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Fawson. I did not realize that you had that much damage to your plane. So thank you for presenting that and for offering some possible solutions. So I'm going to open it up and see if anybody on council has any questions, or go ahead, Councillor Paterica.
Thank you, Mr. Fawson, for that. I just want to clarify, so what are the dates in May roughly that you believe the damage took place?
Between May 5th and May 12th.
Thank you. Obviously, council representative for, to owes the Airport Development Society, as well as their, their committee, the committee that, between them and the town, some of the long-term goals of us working at, trying to enhance the security in the facilities around there. We've had those discussions in the past, and obviously discussions moving forward as to, you know, what can be done to that property, whether it's lighting, whether it's fencing or gates. Locks have come up in the past, and we've had that discussion before, and we're in conversation of what the future continues for that airport property. So I appreciate those comments and concerns. Just wondering, obviously, if you've had some discussion with the Airport Development Society members regarding the damages that took place around that time?
No, I have, have not yet. We, we used to be members of the Osceus Flying Club years ago, but I, I think is Rob Roush?
Rob Roush.
Yeah, I'll, I will get ahold of him. And I'm just sort of making contact. I talked to Jason Beta at the RCMP, and I'm just, and again, it's just, it's nothing anybody can do about it now, but I just want to encourage people.
And we haven't, our committee hasn't met since around that time either, so, you know, that's a conversation we can have within our next committee with them as well, but I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay?
Thank you very much. Okay. We will leave it to the airport committee and to our, our council representative to make sure that gets brought up. All right, I'm, we, next, we have the Board of Variants, but I'm wondering, Shannon, are you ready? Okay, we have a place for you over here. So next, we have the Committee, a draft Board of Variants bylaw, number 1398. And we'll ask our planner, Ms. Dwan, to present this. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And I do just have a quick presentation to run through. Great, thank you. So I figured I would just start us off with a little bit of background as to what a Board of Variants is before I get into, I mean, the brief, I guess, nitty-gritty of what we're presenting on this item. So just a quick overview of the statutory context. The Local Government Act does require that a local government, which has established or adopted a zoning bylaw, must also, by bylaw, establish a Board of Variants. Sorry.
Mrs. Coulson is getting lessons from Mrs. Robinson on how to do this presentation, so just bear with us.
And the clicker is deciding to be a little bit finicky today. So what exactly is a Board of Variants? I don't know how much the town has had to deal with Board of Variants orders in the past, but just to give an overview, a Board of Variants does provide an alternate means of obtaining minor variances, where an individual believes that compliance with the subject bylaw that they're requesting a variance to would cause them undue hardship. So emphasis on the word hardship, that is what the Board of Variants typically focuses on. So municipal Board of Variants is appointed by a municipal council and comprises of either three or five individuals, and that is based on the size of the municipality. So if you have a population of 25,000 or less individuals or residents, that's a three-person Board of Variants. Anything greater than 25,000 is a five-person Board of Variants. So for the Town of Osceus, we would have a three-person Board of Variants. And just one slide back, sorry. So, subject to certain considerations, a Board of Variants may grant variances to a number of different types of bylaw provisions. So one of which being the siting size or dimensions of a building or structure, the siting of a manufactured home in a manufactured home park, subdivision servicing requirements in areas which are zoned for agricultural or industrial use, the prohibition of a structural alteration or addition on a non-conforming building or structure, as well as regulations to a tree protection bylaw. So in making these orders, a Board of Variants must also consider a number of prescribed criteria. So a Board of Variants may grant a variance where it finds that strict compliance with, to the regulation would cause undue hardship to the applicant, as previously mentioned. And it is also of the opinion that the variance or exemption would not result in an inappropriate development of the site, adversely impact the natural environment, substantially affect the use and enjoyment of adjacent lands, vary permitted uses and densities under the applicable bylaw, so very similar to a DVP, defeat the intent of the bylaw, or vary the application of an applicable bylaw in relation to a residential tenure. So as I mentioned, it is very similar to council's powers to issue a development variance permit, but as you can tell, it does have a very restricted, narrow kind of purview, and it is subject to prescribed considerations under the Local Government Act. And generally, we would consider these variances to be minor in nature. Some exceptions, though, something that councils can't necessarily consider in the same way that a Board of Variants would, would be the ability to permit structural alterations or additions to non-conforming buildings and structures, as well as varying tree protection regulations, because neither of those can be dealt with under a development variance permit. So just a bit of history then, as to the town's use of a Board of Variants. So back in 1990, the first Board of Variants Application Fee bylaw was adopted. As the name suggests, it really just established an application fee. In 1992, that bylaw was adopted and replaced by the Board of Variants bylaw 864, where it outlined detailed provisions regarding the application procedure, meeting conduct, as well as notification requirements. And then in 2013, that leads us to our current Board of Variants bylaw, number 1295, being adopted. And similar to the last bylaw, it does establish detailed application procedures, as well as provisions with, with respect to meeting conduct and notification requirements. However, one thing that we did flag when we were reviewing the bylaw itself is that the intent of it does appear to have been to establish a joint Board of Variants with the Regional District of Okanagan and Semilcomin. And you can see that in a number of references that it makes to the Regional District appointing a Board of Variants. So there is a possibility of having a joint Board of Variants, and this is laid out under section 580, 538 of the Local Government Act. So basically, more than two or more local governments can actually meet the requirement to establish a Board of Variants by jointly establishing a Board of Variants by bylaw, but it must be adopted by all participating local governments. Now, the Regional District's current Board of Variants bylaw, number 2494, doesn't actually provide for a joint Board of Variants to be established. So while the town's bylaw does speak to it, the RDOS doesn't kind of mirror that. So the issue that we're dealing with now is that the town's bylaw is seen to be invalid, really, to the extent that it purports to establish a joint Board of Variants with the Regional District. So the bylaw that is attached to this item is proposed bylaw number 1398. And we have received a query which may ultimately result in a Board of Variants appeal. So in order to appoint a Board of Variants for the town, we do have to update the town's current Board of Variants bylaw beforehand. And as I mentioned, we have prepared a draft bylaw, which would effectively cover the town's requirement then to establish that independent Board of Variants. Additionally, we did want to take the opportunity to update the bylaw as well. So a couple of things that we did add relate to streamlining of the Board of Variants process, as well as making sure that for the public and for staff as well, that it's clear when meetings are going to happen, and also provide that flexible format of the electronic hybrid form, instead of having them all be in person. We did also remove references to responsibilities of a secretary role, which was in the previous Board of Variants bylaw. And that's generally to reduce redundancies in the bylaw, as development services staff would generally be undertaking a number of those administrative procedures. So just in summary, the proposed bylaw that we've brought forward is seen to meet the town's obligations in terms of establishing a Board of Variants in accordance with the Local Government Act. And so staff are recommending that council initiate this proposed bylaw, and we would be bringing it forward to the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do remember in 2013 that we did appoint some, some community members to the Board of Variants. I don't ever remember seeing them or hearing about it after that, so it obviously wasn't used well in that circumstance. So the Regional District does have one, and, but it's only for the RDOS. Considering that the RDOS is really pushing for the entire area to do as many things together as possible, do you see that if we set one up, that other municipalities and other areas will also be required because of the zoning bylaw to set them up as well? And my thinking is, once that's all set up and everybody has one, maybe we look at working together. Does that make sense?
Yes, so because all the different municipalities in this area and the Regional District would, are required to have that Board of Variants, I can, I can see there definitely being, you know, merit in having that shared Board of Variants. For the time being, I think it would probably be important that we get this in place to meet our statutory requirements, but certainly it is something I think that the various councils and Board of Directors could consider in the future.
Absolutely, we could look at it in the future. Go ahead, Councillor King.
Thank you, Peter. I have a couple of questions. What makes the RDOS correct and ours wrong? Maybe you should change yours.
I mean, it's certainly an option to have the Joint Board of Variants. The problem is that one of us has a bylaw that says, let's have a joint Board of Variants, and one of us only establishes it for themselves, right? So, yeah, I mean, the, the RDOS Board of Directors can certainly consider adopting a joint Board of Variants bylaw.
What type of people sit on that committee?
So the bylaw itself actually lays out, I believe, the types of individuals and their qualifications, which would ordinarily sit on a Board of Variants. I don't know off the top of my head. I know in the past, we have had individuals who are fairly, I would say, knowledgeable of local government practices, so potentially like former local government staff, no longer practicing, yeah.
Can I just throw that, an answer into that one? The, one of the, of the members of the Board of Variants in 2013 was Mark Chadzie, who had been a councillor, and also before that, had worked with the planning who had been a counselor and also before that had worked with the planning department at the Town of Osuias. So that was why she was chosen. Sorry, go ahead.
And then is it a one-year term or a lifetime term?
Would be a three-year term and appointed by council, yes.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Anybody have any other questions about this? Okay, so, um, what, you're just having a recommendation that this be initiated? Do you need a motion? All right, could we have somebody make a motion that we, um, that we, we bring this Town of Osuias be initiated by bringing first readings to September 24th meeting? Counselor Poterica, Counselor King. Any other questions? All in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next we have the Accessibility Committee Projects. And I do not see Mr. Davis here, so I'm assuming that Mrs. Dennison is going to speak to it.
You are correct. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, uh, the Accessibility and Age Friendly Committee, um, has gone through, um, some needs and wants and have put together a list of, um, items that would make the town more accessible for people with disabilities or mobility issues. Um, these include an accessible seat and portable washroom, a railing at Canal, uh, at the Canal Trail, two electric trikes that would be put in with, um, in conduct, in conjunction with sessions, uh, and a hearing loop, uh, for council chambers to make it more hearing friendly. So, um, the total for the amount of these projects would be $31,500. And, uh, we also have received a grant for 25,000 from Spark BC, which is a social planning and research, uh, council of British Columbia. Uh, and with that, we have already purchased the enclosed trailer, Mobi mat and a second Mobi chair for that. Um, so our recommendation with this is that council receive the report on the Accessibility Committee Projects for information discussion and recommendations of the projects. And if council wishes to bring these forward and approve them to bring it to, um, either the next council meeting or this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? But I'm a little bit confused about the 34,600. Has that already been spent on the list of things that you, that you mentioned like the, um, the Mobi mat, the, um, and the enclosed trailer and the second Mobi chair? Has that taken? If that's correct, okay. So this 31,500 is in addition. Yeah, and I understand that, um, uh, that Sessions is contributing part of this or?
So, um, my understanding is that Brandon, Brandon McLeod, uh, from Sessions, um, brought, uh, the attention of the electric trike to the Accessibility Committee. Um, and so was asking for funding to be able to purchase the trikes and then they would be able to administer it. Um, but having said that, there would be some liability issues that would have to be worked out between the two parties.
Yeah, okay. Good. Go ahead, Counselor Bennett.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion that we look at this afternoon. Uh, the reason why is I've seen those strikes in, uh, Clona and the people, people were pedaling and the people in front of them that were riding in the handicap were, the look in their faces is just worth it. You can tell they're getting out of their homes and they're getting a chance to go out and also trying to go up that hill at the airport. I even need a hand radio.
Um, can I ask about the hearing loop? Now, I have hearing aids in. Is this going to help me or is this going to help other people?
Those with hearing aids and, and those that don't have hearing aids but might need hearing aids.
I needed it as soon as I had to sit beside Myers because I couldn't hear him. I've always told him that. Thank you very much. So we have a motion on, and seconded that. Um, anything else? All in, go, go ahead.
On this afternoon's meeting? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call the vote. All in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Dennison.
Thank you.
Um, and, oh, and you're doing the next one. Okay, the sandbox, sand toy share box.
Yeah, so, uh, an email recei, was received by Community Services, um, requesting to install a box, uh, basically a, a sand boy, a sand toy box at Legion Beach. So this would be similar to our Free Little Libraries where, uh, sand toys could be left for people to use, donated for people, uh, wishing to get rid of the ones that they have and they need a new home. Um, and, uh, we think this is a great, um, uh, value to Legion Beach. Um, there would be some, um, considerations to be made for risk management, including communication and signage, um, where the box would be, um, how it's going to work as in terms of, um, how people are going to donate the toys, how people are going to use the toys, the, the size of the toys, because we don't want big, huge things to take up so much space and, uh, and a formal agreement that outlines, um, the, uh, donators responsibility and our responsibility in terms of maintenance and upkeep, um, type of thing.
Um, I think this is a great opportunity, um, and a great, great addition to Legion Beach. It is used quite heavily by small, uh, families with small children. Um, and so our recommendation is that council receive the report for information and request that administration report back with an implementation, implementation plan for a sand toy share box at Legion Beach.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. Oh, and, and it seconded. I had a question. Um, the toys that go in there, are they, my assumption is they're inspected before they go in. And how about cleaning or repairing?
That would be part of the agreement, um, discussion that we would have to have with the donor, how that's going to all work.
Okay, and there was a box down there at Legion Beach this year has, and I didn't go down and look inside, so I haven't been there, but has it had toys in there and have they been used?
I haven't looked at it myself. I've seen the box. I haven't actually looked into it, but my understanding is it has been used. Um, just because the donor was unaware of the actual procedure of how to get that going. And it, it's a beautiful box that's down.
Yes, I saw it.
Um, it's wonderful. Um, it just maybe a little bit ahead of cart, cart before the horse, a little bit.
Has area been down to use it?
Not yet.
Okay, let's wonder. Yes.
It's mainly with, uh, pails and shovels.
Okay.
For tourists mainly or even local people that go to the beach and don't have them, so they're available and then they just put them back. No, it's a great idea.
I, I think it's a great idea too. So it will be looked at and then obviously taken out probably this year and then reinstated. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, um, and I will call the vote. All in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, um, Mr., Mr. Zachal or Mr. Rizling, who's going to talk about this? The Estimated Timeline Financial Plan. Mr. Zachal, I stole his parking place this morning, so he's.
Oh, you want my report? No, good morning and thank you, Mayor McCorduff. Um, so this is to provide council with an update for the proposed timeline for the 2025 to 2029 financial plan and budget process. Um, the financial plan, um, as we've always mentioned, has to be adopted before May 15th of each year. Um, the earlier the financial plan can be adopted, the sooner capital projects can be initiated, tendered and completed. And it also gives the town the ability, um, to get contractors bidding on the projects and hopefully get better pricing. Um, the town operates and manages the Sun Bowl Arena, which is owned by the RDOS. The RDOS requires their budget by October, so that, that budget is being presented to council at the regular meeting today. Likewise, U.S. Fire Department provides fire protection to three areas. The Town of Osuias, the Osuias Indian Band and the Osuias Rural Fire Protection District. U.S. Indian Band is billed, um, for fire protection based on their service area and charge based on the mill rate established for fire protection and is billed out once the tax rates of bylaw is adopted. So the timing is not as prudent on them. Um, the U.S. Rural Fire Protection District, however, uh, also requires their budget by October so that they can send their requisition into the province. Uh, the province calculates the mill rate and fire protection charges and adds it to the rural area, eh, tax requisitions. Rates for utilities for water, sewer and garbage are established by bylaw and need to be adopted by December 31st. These rates are adjusted to reflect the 2025 to 2029 budget. In 2025, utilities will no longer be included in the property tax notices and will be billed quarterly with the first quarter invoice going out in February of 2025. Um, so the estimated timeline for this budget process, um, September 10th today, um, council to review and approve the Sun Bowl and Fire Department budgets later today. Um, October 25th is our, is our target date, um, to have the 2025 to 2029 water, sewer and garbage recycling budgets, um, to be prepared and once ready, upload it to the town's website and E-News, um, sent out. Um, and advertisement also posted in the Times Chronicle that there will be an opportunity for public input into these budgets. Um, November 12th at our regular meeting, um, in council chambers, um, the water, sewer and garbage recycling budgets would be added to the agenda package, but only for council to receive at that time. So no debate, no discussion on it. Um, because we want to move forward with, uh, the November 14th special open meeting at the Sonora Center, which is to receive public input into the 2025 to 2029 water, sewer and garbage recycling budgets before the council starts deliberating on it. Um, November 21st to 22nd would be the date for a special budget open meeting, um, in the council chambers. And that would be the time where council would review and provide input and direction to staff regarding those budgets. November 2020 or November 29th would be when we would be targeting to bring the entire remainder of the budget forward and financial plan. Likewise, posting the town website, E-News, um, advertising in the Times Chronicle, uh, for the opportunity for public input. December 10th would be the date that the, um, town budget would be coming forward for council just to receive for information once again. Um, timing wise, probably the water, sewer and garbage recycling user fee bylaws, we'd be shooting for adoption because it needs to be done before December 31st. Um, January 9th, 2025 would be the special open meeting at the Sonora Center to receive public input into the town budget and five-year financial plan. And then January 16th to 17th, 2025 would be our special open meeting in council chambers to, for council then to review and provide input and direction into the 2025 to 2029 financial plan. And go from there. So.
So can I, I was looking through this and looking at my, my agenda. Um, November the 21st, um, is an RDOS meeting. And, uh, if I don't attend, Counselor King attends. And so that would leave neither one of us able to go. I'm just wondering if there is anything we can do to adjust that. Um, and I don't know whether there is or not, but the RDOS also has budget meetings. And so there's several of those added on as well. Thanks, Jim. Go ahead.
Um, so absolutely, um, this, this was just a tentative timeline for us to show the framework of what processes were going to happen. We will definitely work with council to make sure that we've got all the availability. Um, this isn't set in stone. This is, um, to, to give council the heads up of how we're going to be presenting the budgets, how public input is going to be received before we start deliberating the budgets. Uh, but council also has that ability to have the budget packages at the same time as the public's receiving that information. So trying to keep that as transparent as possible is what we're, 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 we're shooting for.
The, the other one that I have, uh, might have a concern about is November the 29th. I have an Etsy BC meeting at 2:00 PM that day and I'm the chair of it. So, um, if I can, you know, scoot out and deal with that one, it's not till two, so it would work. Thanks.
So the nice thing about November 29th is that's just the date where the budget package should be completed and uploaded to the website, providing our E-News, sending out the advertisements.
Okay.
Um, council wouldn't be getting that package physically until the, you know, December 10th agenda. Yes, council could, um, actually go online to be able to see it November 29th, but it's just, um, that's just for posting.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And there may be other people too that have things on, and so we need to look at that now that we've got these suggested dates. Thank you. Anybody else have anything that they wanted to add to this? Okay. Um, well, thank you very much. So you're not looking for a, um, hang on, we haven't finished this yet. You're not looking for a resolution or anything to accept this right now? Or are we just, you know, it's just suggested things? We don't need a resolution. No, okay. Thank you.
But we do ask the council to look at the dates and try to speed back as soon as possible.
Absolutely.
Make sure the Sonora Center, et cetera, is available, et cetera.
Sure. Thank you very much. Counselor King? Counselor Poterica seconding that. All in favor. Thank you, everybody.